All right. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It is, let's see, March 21st, 2022, 6:30 PM. This is the Lakeville Select Board meeting, acting as Wage and Personnel Board as needed from remote location. Is anyone other than Lake Cam recording this meeting? All right. In accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the March 21st, 2022 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Select Board will be held remotely. To view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam, and you should not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. So the first thing we have is announcements. Agenda item number one, Select Board announcements. Just a reminder, the annual town election will take place on April 4th, 2022, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp. Absentee ballot applications are available and must be received by the town clerk prior to 5:00 PM on March 29th, 2022. In-person absentee voting is available during, yes, someone? Okay, is available during regular business hours, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the town clerk's office by appointment only. Absentee voting over the counter will end on Friday, April 1st, at 5:00 PM. All this information can be found right on the website under, I think, the Town Clerk section, maybe even the News and Events. If there's any questions, you can always call the clerk's office as well. All right, Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several announcements. First of all, thanks to the efforts of Representative Oral and Senator Rodriguez. The town was awarded a $30,000 earmark in the FY22 state budget to assist the implementation of our capital program. The grant may be, must be expended before June 30th, so we're looking at replacing local support for an existing project, probably either the old library or the fire station, then we'll free up capital money for something, another project later on. Over the weekend, Middleborough Gas and Electric completed the conversion of streetlights on Kenneth Wells Drive to LED fixtures, which will result in better lighting for the industrial park at lower cost. The good news is they had the stock, they had the inventory in place, so we just had to pay them for the labor. It was very, very affordable. We're continuing to work with the town's OPMs on the water study, DPW Admin Building and the Town Hall Fire Station Study. The water project, as you know, is in vision to be funded by ARPA money, whose use is limited to categories that we discussed at previous meetings last June and January. The Massachusetts Municipal Association held a briefing last week for local officials and state representatives. The briefing outlined MMA's priorities for the current legislative session, which includes addressing funding inequities and unrestricted aid, Chapter 70 School Transportation, and Chapter 90, if that, and other items in your agenda. On a personal note, I'm pleased to note that my designation as an ICMA Credential Manager took effect on March 1st. To attain the designation, applicants are required to complete a comprehensive assessment and participate in at least 40 hours per year professional development, about halfway there right now. The credential manager program is designed to demonstrate a commitment to continuous learning and to maintain the highest standards of public management. That's all I have, Madam Chair. You're muted.
Sorry. Congratulations on that. Richard Lorraine, do you guys have anything? I'm sorry, I went without even asking if you had any Selectmen's announcements.
I'm all set. Thank you.
I'll set, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, so we are going to skip to, let's try, Mark is with us, right? Mark Resnick?
I see him listed here. Mark, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so let's skip down to number six, discussing the possible vote on the four zoning bylaw amendments. So you want to tell us a little bit about these, Mark?
Sure. The first article I submitted was the site plan review. Currently, the board has, the town has site plan review in the zoning bylaws. So it was a, probably at the time, a first attempt at having planning board review site plans. But we have since added sections to the site plan and refined, it still applies to the same types of development. We didn't change that. But we did add for any new multifamily dwellings that that should, which would be three or more units, we added that. The requirements are very similar. There were separate types of requirements before for different commercial and industrial. We consolidated that. We standardized the review process, and we put in specifics, performance standards. You know, before you had to submit the drainage plan or or other things, but there was no standard in which you had to meet. So we've added some of those standards. We'd added some very basic architectural requirements, but it allows the board to ask for a higher level of architectural design than some of the recent developments that may be built with cinder block buildings right on Main Street, so that you can try and get a little bit more consistency to the design. And then some more administration portions, sections on the decision and inspections and fees and appeals is listed at the back end of the bylaw, so.
Okay. Do we want to take these one at a time, or do we want to approve them all? Does, I don't know how, what's the board's fancy here? Anyone?
I think one at a time would probably.
Okay, all right. So does anyone have questions on the new site plan review bylaw?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Mark, Section 6752 hearings. In looking at the having to do with the posting notice at the town hall for at least seven days prior to the hearing. And notices shall be sent to all abutters at least seven days prior to the hearing day. And then the hearing day is 21 days after that. I'm not sure that seven days prior to the hearing day for the abutters is enough time.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, because, you know.
I mean, it's shorter than than subdivision control or if you apply for variance, you'd need the two weeks prior to the date of the hearing. But currently, you don't require public hearings. So I felt that, and there is no state statute you have to meet in order to force site plan review for notifications. So lots of towns, it varies from seven days to 10 days. Some towns do the two weeks, but so that's why we did the seven days.
The only reason I bring it up is because, you know, the mails today are not as fast as they used to be, you know. You know, getting to people's houses, I mean, and that's the only reason I want to, I just want to make sure that any abutters, you know, would definitely get notification of the hearing in enough time. But anyways, that's just a comment on that particular area. The other thing that concerns me is that having to do with peer review. I don't think that, I'm talking about bigger projects here. I'm not talking about small projects. But some of the bigger projects that, you know, have gone on in town, you know, over the last couple of years anyways, that we do the peer review, but we didn't, we don't follow up to make sure that the construction and the engineering is being done properly. And I think that's a problem that we need to address in site review.
Yeah, well, we've added a section on inspections, site inspections, and and although the board hasn't decided on the exact fees, they're authorized to adopt fees, whether it would be just the the cost of the inspection, or there would be a set fee, different towns do it different ways, so. So we will begin to inspect construction to ensure that it is, things are built as per the approved plan.
Okay, I think that's pretty important, because we're not doing that now.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Or members, I just received a text from Chair. She's momentarily indisposed. So I don't know, Rich, if you want to continue?
Sure, I guess we can continue, and we'll go on to the next bylaw, I would suggest, and then we'll come back and we'll vote on it when she comes back.
I still have, I have a question on this one, actually. If I may, Mark, on the section with the abutters, the notice shall also be sent to all abutters. I know we should be clarifying, is it 100, within 100 feet, within 300 feet, within 500 feet? Because I know we do that for, you know, subdivisions.
That's correct. This is just, we had just written in directive abutters, because the notification in the public hearing portion of this bylaw is new, so we, it says under the application that it's directive abutters.
Right, but I guess, you know, directive abutters, is that, you know, within 100 feet?
No, those are, those would be abutters that directly, whose property directly touches the applicants.
All right, I just want to make sure that that was just spelled out correctly, so that there's no question with that, so that we're adhering to our bylaw, shall we, you know, pass this on town floor?
Yes.
To all directive abutters, baby.
It says that in the, in Section 6751 on page two, as far as the supplemental, it says, "Smithen Application Directive Abutters List."
6752?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, 6751 at the bottom of page two.
Well, maybe I'm not seeing that.
The second line of the, of the section, which says, "Application", "Applicants for Building Permits under 6733."
Directive abutters list, okay. Okay.
Took me a second to, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's all I had on this one, I think. Other than that, I thought it looked good, and I liked the fact that you had in here on the site access about the visibility piece of it for safety. I appreciate that piece.
I see Madam Chair's back, I believe.
I am, sorry.
That's okay.
I don't have any questions on this, so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to refer this article, Site Plan Review, to the Planning Board to hold a public hearing.
I'll second for discussion.
All right, and discussion.
Just wanted to know, Mark, have you submitted this to Town Council?
No, I think Ari said that after your review, all the articles would be submitted to Town Council, and we would be posting the hearing, so if there are any changes, we would discuss it at the hearing and make the amendments as necessary.
That's correct. So we're just voting to put this on, this article on the town warrant.
No, well, send it to the Planning Board for hearing.
Right.
Yeah, we are going to vote on the warrant until a little bit later. Yeah, yeah.
Set it on questions, yes? Okay, all those in favor of moving this new site plan review bylaw along?
Carbone, aye?
Oh, La Camera, aye.
Baby, an aye. The next one we have is the new bylaw allowing open space residential developments.
I'm sure, I think Sign is next, isn't it?
Oh, is it? Sorry, I had a little disaster here, and my paperwork all fell apart. How about we let Selectmen, so Blackboard Member La Camera do this whole article, this whole agenda item?
I'll let Mark do his thing here.
Okay.
I got to tell you, this is the most confusing thing that I've seen.
Yes, well, so it's, the reason why it's a little confusing is that we tried to, instead of rewrite the bylaw in its entirety, we tried to use the same format that was currently in place and not change most of the current bylaw. So we tried to add, the way it's set up, some additional, add some definitions, add some procedural portions to it, and add some limitations, because even though there's a couple portions of it that are somewhat restrictive, there's a lot of it that's open-ended, so so that's why it seems like when you, when you look at the draft that has the new and the old, just for explanation purposes, but the actual bylaw that was submitted is to delete the old one in its entirety and adopt a new version in its entirety. So if you'd like, I can kind of go through a little bit of what was changed.
If I may, typically, in the past, Mark, and what it's helped us, because I think we've just gotten, grown accustomed to it, that when we're changing a bylaw or we're adding things, we usually do like a strike through what the current one is, and then I think that that's, I was going through this, I was trying to, you know, keep up with it, and that was where I was a little confused of, you know, what we were deleting, what we were adding, and what was going away, what was coming in, but I think that the movements here, but I was just a little confused.
Okay, I just, I found that the, in reading other previous, how things were changed, I just found it hard to read the sections with the lines had gone through, and I've done it this way, where I write, you know, to add certain things and to remove certain things and do them in different fonts, so you can still read it and see exactly what was being changed.
All right, okay. So on this one here, the open space, I just had one question.
Madam Chair, we were going to vote on the individual.
Oh, I thought we moved.
We're still on signs.
Oh, sorry, my confusion. Again, I put the paper in the wrong place. All right, signs. Does anyone want to make a motion, or does anyone still have more questions on the signs?
I'll make a motion, we refer the Lakeville sign, opposed Lakeville sign bylaw to the Planning Board to hold a public hearing.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Mark, does Nate, is the, our building commissioner is designated here as the official person for the permits of the signs. Did he have a chance to review this and provide some comment?
He has, it's been sent to him, and he's reviewed this, and he hasn't specifically sent any comments on anything in particular. He felt it was the board's decision to, you know, work through the changes they felt was best for the community, and you know, he did, as we were drafting this, if he felt something was a little too restrictive or, you know, just a little, or wasn't quite, was too restrictive as far as speech, let's say, controlling speech, there's some change about political signs, so so he just wanted to make sure we didn't do anything that would be deemed, that wouldn't be approved by the IBAG's office.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm pretty sure Nate told me, Lorraine, that he went through a couple of these drafts with Mark, so that he had gone through them a couple of, as they were being worked on. So I think he definitely has taken a look at all this. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of moving this one along?
Carbone, aye?
Camera, aye.
Baby, an aye. All right, now we have the open space. All right. Want to give us a little review of that, Mark?
Sure, the open space residential development is, basically allows someone to develop the same number of lots on a parcel of land that they could do via conventional subdivision. However, this would allow them to develop the same number of lots, but with smaller lots, allowing them to reduce the amount of roads that they have to construct, the amount of drainage that has to get controlled and treated, and it would provide open space and/or recreational land for the community. So it's been used, you know, quite successfully in most towns across the Commonwealth, and it's just another, it's not the, you know, we're going to conserve all the open spaceland in the town. It's just a way of trying to, you know, preserve some additional open spaceland, but also to provide a different, you know, more of a neighborhood-style housing in the community, because the lots are smaller, and the houses would be closer together. But, but, so that's, that's what this bylaw does.
Okay. Rich, do you want to make a motion for this one, too, and then we can discuss?
I'll make a motion, we refer the Open Space Residential Development bylaw to the Planning Board to hold a public hearing.
A second.
And discussion, so this is definitely to permit not to, they don't have to do this, it just allows them to do this, correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. I do want to say that, and even though Helen's here, I'm not going to put her on the spot. I do know in some of the APC Steering Committee meetings, they've been talking about this, too, as a way of, you know, so I agree with Mark that this is definitely working in other parts of the state. My only question I have on this is under, on page three, number two, it says, "Use for open space." Do we know, it does say the Select Board must vote to accept this park, or, but do we know if it would be the developer that's responsible for maintenance, or?
No, if, when the land is transferred to the town, it would be the town that would be responsible. You know, obviously, if it's part of a larger, I don't know if we have any park maintenance funds or anything like that, or gift fund, but again, you know, that's something could be negotiated with the developer. If it's a particularly large development, so.
Yeah.
That would only apply to subdivisions of at least 25 or more lots, so.
Thank you. Anyone else questions?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think one of the things that needs to be done is that, you know, since we would be allowing this, the developer to use less land, less space, you know, I'm not just going to say less drainage, but, you know, one of the things that I think we need to do is to make sure that any of these developments, that the, all the maintenance of the drainage and the roadways be the responsible of the homeowners association.
May I chime in, Madam Chair, in that moment?
Yep.
I don't know if that's always going to be practical, and I'd hate to see a future board totally tied on this. I think that if you have, personally, I think if you have the Select Board, requiring Select Board approving, accepting the park, then it's really incumbent on the Select Board from a policy standpoint to decide whether it's to be maintained by the town or by, or to insist on an arrangement with the developer. It's my opinion.
Yeah, and not all instances, you're going to want to have a private association managing the roadways and drainage. And there are many instances where they build everything to conformance with the subdivision control laws, and it's a low-maintenance drainage system. You may want to accept it as a public roadway.
Or you may want a public park.
Right, in public park, we require that there be public access to all of the open space and parkland as well, so it may be a desirable thing to have the roads not be a private ways, maintained, controlled by an association, so.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I see developments all over the place with other towns that are doing it this way. And with the cost of maintaining roads and drainage and stuff like that, I think that ought to be a major consideration to do this. We're giving the developer a significant, significant benefit from going from 70,000 square foot lots to 30,000 square foot lots. That's a huge, huge difference, you know, in cost savings, you know, for the developer. So we've had a lot of problems, because the drainage lots in certain developments, Mark, you've probably already seen some of these, that, you know, we don't know who's responsible for the drainage lots. I mean, they're not owned by the town, they're owned by the developer, and, you know, they don't pay the taxes on them, they just walk away from it, and then the town is responsible, you know, to maintain those drainings. So I have a concern about that. That's just my opinion.
I agree with Rich on that one.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that it needs to be absolutely clear who's responsible for maintaining the roads, maintaining the drainage, paying the light bill, the streetlights and all that. And, but that's what happens during the review process, is that determination is made, is it desirable for it to be a town road, or is it desirable for it to be a a private association and have them maintain it? If it's, the responsibility is laid out and very clear from the very beginning, then all parties understand what needs to be done, and who's going to accept the responsibility for this. But it never should end up continuing to be the developer's land. It should be either an association created and approved prior to, you know, the construction or, and, or it should be determined that it will become a town road and the town will accept the responsibility. And again, that depends upon the public benefit, depends upon the type of drainage system that's in, installed, the number of, perhaps the number of homes as well, so. And any waivers that might be granted by the board, so a number of factors. And I'd hate to absolutely make it one way or the other, and not give the board some leeway there.
I just, Madam Chair, just one further comment. The town has accepted roads and drainage in the past that we should not have accepted. And they caused, they caused problems today that we have to take care of those roads. We've had to repave some of those roads, we've had to fix the drainage and so forth. This is a major concern as far as I'm concerned, you know, about addressing some of these problems, you know, with how the roads got accepted. Now there's a completely different board, I'm sure, but that, I don't know, I think some bad decisions have been made about accepting some of these roads, and now we're stuck with fixing those roads or fixing the drainage. So I am concerned about it, Mark, just so you know.
Well, I understand. I mean, every time I come pride at this, you know, there's uh, past issues that whether it's with site plans or subdivisions that need to be addressed and corrected and then move forward, so.
Um, okay, so, yep.
So I just think, you know, with what Rich is saying, and I, again, I agree, I've, I've seen it myself going through. I just think that we need to be able to protect the town with respects to that, and we need to be very clear, you know, through our language and how we vet these developments so that we are protected in this, that they're, because as the boards change, it's hard to remember the institutional background of, of why something was, was brought to the table, and if it's spelled out very clearly in our rules and regulations or through our bylaws, I think it needs to be in there. Because I don't want to be, you know, in that situation where, you know, it becomes a, a high cost to the town for something that we could have avoided and worked together with the developer so that it was a smooth transition.
Yep, so we, this is a completely new, new bylaw, right? And we can take a vote, see what happens, and so we have a motion, unless anyone is withdrawing motions, can we proceed with the vote or? Okay, all those in favor?
Carbone, I?
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. Okay, so we'll move this forward and then we'll see what happens to it at the public hearing. For the planning board. Okay, and then the last one shouldn't take us very long, Mark. Could you just quickly explain this one? It's pretty.
So um, a few years ago, I believe it was two thousand eighteen, there was a zoning change in the use chart to change um, auto and boat sales and rentals or service to become a special permit in the business district and remove it from the industrial district. And that was passed at town meeting. However, in our section on special permits further in the bylaw, and I'm not sure why, but there is a, a long list of uses that are in the use chart and sometimes it just replicates the requirement of the use chart. And in a few instances, it says some extra special conditions that you may need to comply with. This one just replicated the, the use chart requirement, so it wasn't changed, and it's just said, as Board of Appeals is the special permit granting authority in the industrial district, and it really is no longer permitted in the industrial district, so that needs to get changed to the business district.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to refer the, the, this amendment to the zoning bylaw, section seven four point six, uses by special permit to the planning board to hold a public hearing.
Second. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Carbone, I?
Baby and I, all right. All right, I'm going to ask Chairman Beal if he would like to open his meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Darren Beal is chairman of the Lakeville Finance Committee. I'd like to call the Lakeville Finance Committee meeting to order at seven oh six PM. We'll see, take attendance, Katie?
President.
Larry?
President.
President.
Brian?
President.
And Darren, present. We're all here, Madam Chair.
Okay, so um, I will turn it over right now to Ari. Where did you go on my screen? Oh, there you are.
Still here.
Okay, if we want to go over the budget, just in case anyone's wondering, this draft is was posted with the, I think this entire agenda packet was posted, so this draft is on the website. But we'll talk about that later too.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. We have a few updates from earlier discussions, which we can talk about. They're all illustrated on the handout in color coding, which Todd will talk about. A couple of things that I think we're pretty close to being where we need to be. I'm very pleased to say that this, we have a budget that has no one-time money in it. It's sustainable going forward, and it is a, based on pretty conservative estimates as well. One major change that they'll see in the capital plan is that you'll see that the DPW building is no longer in there in FY twenty-three. We've had, we're, we're going back with the OPM on some design issues and, and, and cost containment that we're going to have to run through to make this work. So we're not quite ready to go forward with that one yet. But that money, that was in, the free cash that was applied to that has gone back to stabilization now, so that'll, we'll be able to use that later on if we need to, or, or some other way if we can, because at this point, it's looking more like a fall town meeting item anyway. The budget doc itself will be produced and posted online while events at town meeting, once we're done with all, with this, if we, if the, if the board and the finance committee see fit to prove where we are, then we will produce a document that we can, that will be able, that will post and distribute. And I would imagine, there's really no reason to think that we wouldn't be able to get it to post it for the public. You know, with, with a number of weeks ahead of a town meeting.
Okay.
So um, so anyway, that, I'm going to hang over to Todd, let him give some uh, quick updates on some of the changes that we, that we had. At this point, we have some firm numbers from the school district especially that has moved in our favor, which will, school districts, which will help us out as well. So Todd, why don't you go ahead?
Sure, thank you. Good evening. Speaking to the, the cover page, our sources and uses summary toward the bottom. When we met two weeks ago, there were a couple of open items that we have firmed up. One is a, a small increase to the expense line for the board of assessors, which relates to a software upgrade that they are pursuing. The, the upgrade itself was financed a couple of years ago at, at a previous town meeting un, under the capital article. So this is just the ongoing annual maintenance cost associated with that upgrade. And also Ari mentioned, the regional school district has made some reductions to the assessment for both communities. And we're, we're now at a, at a point where we believe the committee is revisiting this on Wednesday night of this week, and they do have their public hearing scheduled for, I believe, April sixth, at which time they would, they would formally vote on the budget. We do anticipate both on the town, state aid and in the regions, that there may be some upside as the legislature moves for, forward through, through the state budget process. Not likely we'll have any, any update prior to town meeting in May, but certainly by the first of the summer and prior to setting any tax rate in the fall. We're, we're hopeful that there may be some upside both on chapter seventy-eight and the per pupil amount that they settle on and possibly unrestricted aid for the, for the community. So we, we believe the variables at this point that may happen before town meeting or more likely after town meeting all, all seem to point favorably for the community. So with, with those adjustments for the region and the assessors' expenses, we have, that did necessitate us to notch up new growth by about twenty-nine thousand dollars. We do have that, so we'd have an estimate of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The Board of Assessor's Office has confirmed to us that their preliminary number is comfortably five hundred thousand for new growth. So at this juncture, again, we think there may only be some upside to that. And certainly if there are changes to the school assessment due to state aid or additional available funds, we can certainly revisit any other opportunity in, at the fall town meeting prior to setting the tax rate. So we do have before you a balanced budget. As Ari said, it, it assumes no one-time funding. This is funded through property tax, state aid, local revenues. And with respect to the capital plan, as Ari mentioned, there's just been one change. We are going to defer the, the highway facility until we have we have some work to do in terms of both design and, and as Ari said, the cost of the project. So it's possible we'll bring this to the town in the fall, or if not, next spring. So in lieu of that, we had, we had a placeholder, as you recall, of five hundred thousand for this project. We are going to go back and recommend that, that we put that into the town stabilization fund from free cash. So the capital plan is, is largely funded through one-time sources, primarily free cash and a small amount of retained earnings and some old capital article balances with one loan or borrowing authorization being moved forward to town meeting, which relates to the ladder truck for the fire department. So with that, the capital plan is, is fully funded. The capital committee did meet, since we met with this group two weeks ago, the, the committee met and we went through the five-year plan, and they did vote to support what you have before you tonight for FY twenty-three.
All right.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I think I'll tell my, I mute there. Full disclosure, they actually voted to approve the capital plan with the DPW building in. The, the removal of the DPW building is a, is a late, is a late development, which, which occurred as we're trying to nail down the cost estimates on the project.
Okay, I'll open it up first to the finance committee, Darren. I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want to talk about it with your board or ask questions?
Darren, I'll, I'll open it up for discussion with the board members. Does anyone on the finance committee have any questions or things they want to address? Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quick question, given that we're going to, it looks like push out the DPW building yet another year, unfortunately. What is the, the current cost of the, the new mobile offices there? I mean, that's something we're going to have to carry for another year. Is that already accounted for?
Todd, do you want to, do I have it?
I don't, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
The, the rental that are coming out facilities budget. I don't know the exact cost of the rental, but it's, it's assumed, it's, it's, it's assumed in the facilities budget.
Okay, for the coming year.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's not a large number. The, I, I could, we get, we get you a specific number. I don't, actually, it escapes me at the moment, Brian, but it, but it's not, it's not a consequential number.
No, that's fine, as long as it's already accounted for in here somewhere.
And, you know, I, I wouldn't assume it's going to be another year. I'm hoping that we can get this together for, for fall town meeting or at least some plan. You know, we may, there are a couple of, we have a meeting this week with the OPM. There may be some possibilities we could look at such as, you know, moving forward with the design or having another, having a cost estimator, take another look at it. Couple of things to do. You know, to really get a sense of where we are. It's just that the, the, there was not possible to get a, a number that we felt comfortable bringing forward in time for, for, for us today.
Okay, appreciate it.
Anyone else on the finance committee? No, I had one thing. Todd, can you talk about, if the numbers do come back favorable, as we expect they will, what happens to the excess excess resource or income?
Sure, so if, for example, the town has additional favorable state aid, it, it's more likely to be a lot of money, but it would become, if, if we do nothing after town meeting, prior to setting the tax rate, it would become what's referred to as unused tax levy for one year. So that additional aid from the state would reduce the dependence on property tax. With respect to the regional schools, it would also require a vote of, of the school committee to reduce the assessment for both communities, in which case we would have a choice in the fall to either leave the school budget as originally voted, which would then have no tech, tax impact, or we could ask town meeting to reduce the school assessment, possibly use it for something else, or if we don't use it for something else, have a, again, a little bit of excess unused tax levy for the one year that would be available in FY twenty-four, but it would, would reduce what we'd raise in the fall.
Um, one thing I note, if it's okay, Darren, the, the unrestricted aid question. So MMA, the, the, the numbers, you recall that the governor proposed was a two-point-seven percent increase across the board for localities in unrestricted aid. That, that was a little difficult to swallow for localities, given the rate of increase that the state's seeing in their revenue. So MMA's been pushing hard for seven-point-five percent increase, which seems that they have a number of legislators on the board, including our local, our listeners as well. Give a sense of the differential between that, it would be about another forty-two thousand dollars for the town. It's not, it's not, it's not earth, it's not life-changing, but you know, it's, 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 it's a little, it's a little extra.
Yeah, it all adds up, right?
Yeah.
So, no, and I think it's important for people to hear that, that these numbers are based on best estimates, and they can fluctuate, and you know, there's a chance that they may end up actually being better than, than what's listed, so.
And it pays to be conservative too.
Correct, absolutely. Yep, absolutely. And I'll just add for the record, if anyone's, you know, for people that are watching, the finance committee has been involved with this process from almost the beginning. Obviously, we haven't done as much work as the people, other people in this meeting, but we've reviewed the numbers, have spoken to the department heads, so this, this is just an update, and we're very familiar where the numbers and where they're coming from.
Thank you. So do we want the finance committee to approve this? Or do we want to have the selectmen talk about it? Rich, Lorraine, you have comments?
I just have a, a quick question, Madam Chair. I'm hoping that somebody can refresh my memory on the capital for the parks. The tennis courts at Ted Williams Camp, was that last year's? The resurfacing of tho, of those? I know that we discussed it. Somebody just recently asked me about it. And I couldn't, for the life of me, recall. I know we talked about it.
I believe that's correct, Lorraine, although I don't think that they've managed to let a contract on that yet.
Okay.
Yes, and I, I believe, Lorraine, it, it was approved by town meeting at an amount of twenty-eight thousand. And I think the, the park commission has had a difficult time getting pricing within that, you know, considering they're subject to prevailing wage. So they did have a price earlier this. So they did have a price earlier this year, but it was not includes including reflecting prevailing wage, so. I'm not sure where the project's at, but it hasn't moved forward.
Okay, all right. No, I appreciate that. I knew there was something and I just couldn't bring my my mind around to it, but, okay, thank you.
Okay, so Rich, do you have any questions on the budget, the capital plan?
Madam Chair, the only comment I would make is that, you know. Everybody's worked really hard, including the finance committee and all the department heads and the school. Committees to get this budget to, we think it's. Overall, it's acceptable, you know, for everybody to to approve, so. I would recommend at this point that we, you know, approve this and if we have to make any further adjustments. You know, just before town meeting, we'll we'll do that, but there's a lot of work and a lot of preparation to get to that point, so. I feel comfortable with the budget. I also feel comfortable with the capital plan.
Okay, Lorraine, anything else?
The only thing is, I I agree, there's a lot of work that went into this. I'm actually comfortable and, you know, prepared to be to defend this budget. So even if we were to make some adjustments, it's more of just how we balance it versus, you know, the number. That we end up voting this evening.
So, okay. Okay, so if that's the case, Mr. Chair, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, would someone on the finance committee make like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the finance committee recommend the FY twenty twenty three budget and capital plan as presented.
Okay. All in favor? Katie?
Rose's eye.
Brian?
Hey, hi.
And Beal's eye.
Okay, thank you. So. Do we want to vote or do we want to let the finance committee finish their meeting? It's up to you guys what you want to do.
I'll make a motion that we recommend the F twenty three budget and capital plan as as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion for the selectment, the select board?
Just just one, Madam Chair. I know that we've gone into detail for, you know, line item for the budgets. I just wanted to. And maybe this is something that you had planned to discuss this evening, but when will we be putting the line item budget up? For our residents to take a look at.
I'll speak to that if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Yep, well, Ari and I talked about it today, so.
So what we'll do with this with this vote is prepare the budget for presentation for for town meeting. And we post the budget up ahead of then. We just need to update, we want to update the management pages. And essentially what I'm hoping to do is is post a document similar to the one you received in January, but updated with numbers. Which aren't going to take too many, there haven't been that many changes. We'll post that. I imagine we'll be able to do that in a week or two.
Okay, and that's the line item budget, correct?
That the line item budget was in that document, yeah.
Right, and then for town meeting, we'll be going with the summary, the budget separate. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll have a budget document, too. I think for transparency purposes, that's important.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I I know I always say the same thing. I like. Even when I would just attend town meeting, I always liked knowing the budget ahead of time, so we'll. Well, even what's on here today right now is online, so I think it got posted Thursday when the meeting got posted, so. All right, all those in favor on the select board?
Carboni eye.
Baby and I. All right, and then, Mr. Chair, I think you have minutes, too?
Yes, we do, yeah. Everyone on the finance committee receive and have a chance to review the March seventh, twenty twenty two minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion or questions?
I do.
Okay.
I I think it's me, and it's flattering, but I'm listed as Mr. Young on the.
Wrong committee.
To amend that.
I just thought it was a nickname, but I liked it.
You are now on the open space committee.
There you go. Anyone else? Okay, anyone make like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the finance committee minutes from Monday, March seventh, twenty twenty two.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, oh, sorry, any discussion?
Do you want to accept it even if it doesn't have me listed? It has somebody else. Accepting.
It will be as amended, right? Approved as amended, Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Katie?
I.
Adam?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Larry? And Beal's eye. Any other new business? More old business finance committee would like to discuss? No? Okay, I'll make a motion that the finance committee closes its meeting at seven twenty six PM.
I can.
All in favor? One more time, Katie?
Hi.
Adam?
Adam, I.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Larry? And Beal's eye. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you all.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
So I know we have a time certain in four minutes. I don't know the two Bedford's going to take very long, and I hate to make Mark sit around. So.
Go ahead, Rich.
Madam Chair, there's actually another thing is that, you know, I don't want poor Todd to hang around, but. I want to, I want him to be part of this conversation about the. But that that's up to you. We can do both of them, you know, and they can, we can wait for our discussion at seven thirty if that's what they want to do.
You want to talk in the APC discussion, I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay. So which one do you want to do first?
Let's just do number five because we have Nancy, right? Nancy, you're here. So this is.
Madam Chair, she's going to be here for the APC thing, too. So why don't we, why don't we do Mark?
Okay.
I'm just trying to suggest. Keep.
All right. Okay. Mark?
Yes. Yeah.
We're bouncing you all around tonight. No sense.
I was gonna say I can wait because I may want to listen to the APC thing. Okay, all right.
So let's have Mark go over agenda item number seven.
So, so basically. Two Bedford Street is proposed to be. Developed into a. Commercial building that'll have offices and some retail and a restaurant in one end of the building. With a lot of parking. I reviewed the site plan and there's a two and a half page comment letter, variety of issues, some of which can be addressed. Some of which will take some some creative engineering. So, however, I did receive, rather than go through any of these items, I did talk to. The applicant's representative. They they did submit a modified plan to me today. Which is still develops most of the site and has many of the same. Issues related to it. So we have a meeting set up for later this week and they are also asking to continue their. Meeting with the planning board for site plan review to for a couple of weeks, so that's the short.
Okay, so we're basically tabling this, correct? You're working on it, you had changes.
Yeah, I mean, unless the board has any specific knowledge of the site of the area that the planning board should be aware of. You know, that's kind of the purpose of forwarding, you know, the plans to the various. You know, boards and department heads.
Okay, does either. Selectman have anything, Rich, Lorraine? I do know that I read through all your comments and. You know, I I kind of said the same thing to myself. It looks like they need to go back to the drawing board a little bit, so. I guess I'm happy to know that that's sort of taking place.
Madam Chair, the only thing I have a comment on is that Mark, according to the plan, they're asking for. Taunton water, I assume it's Taunton water. But you should be aware, and I don't know why they haven't requested it, because the board of selectmen have to approve that, so. And looking at the plan to state highway, you know, as well, and. State just redid that section of the road a few years ago, so they won't be too happy about digging up a trench there, but anyways. See, might want to bring that up at the meeting as well.
Okay.
Lorraine?
That was my comment, too. I just wanted to see if they had any idea about their water allocation so that we can. You know, plan for that as well. So. That's it.
Okay. All right, Ari, anything on this from you?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So we will turn it back over to you, Mark, I guess.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Well, thank you.
Yep, thanks. Okay. So now we can go to number four and number five, so would we want to do five first? And so that way Todd can can be free after this. So let's go to five first. All right, Nancy, I will let you take it away. We tabled this at our last meeting because it seems like we had some questions. And I know you had offered to come, but I didn't think that. That we we needed you, but clearly we need you. So. Uh-oh, are you muted?
I am. Okay, this is about the increase in the budget for the APC Rangers. And I think my original letter that I sent didn't really explain the whole situation. I was trying not to do a three page letter. Basically, I just. Talked about the minimum wage. It's been twenty years and the minimum wage used to be ten dollars and now it's fourteen twenty five. So, but that's only a part of it. Another part of it was COVID. When COVID hit and everybody wanted to be outside. We were overrun with people everywhere from Betty's neck to the whole APC complex. In the past, it's been our usual procedure to lay people off our really cut down hours in the winter. So that when summer comes and spring and we have a lot of problems that we can increase the hours and it usually balanced off. So when COVID went, came. The first year, I put myself as a volunteer instead of a paid employee. As environmental manager, hoping to stretch that money out and figuring when COVID was over. Then we could go back to the usual, but now we're in the second year of COVID and it's come to the point. I couldn't cut anybody's hours down this winter, so that's how. We got into this situation of running out of money and not having enough to finish out the year. And I can't see it getting any better because I think what's happened is now people have discovered what's out there. And they're going to keep coming back, so I don't know that it's ever going to be able to slow down again. And therefore, that's why we were looking for, actually, it was Todd that said, I had talked to Todd and actually. It's going to be fifteen dollars an hour probably by next year, I believe, in Massachusetts, so. When I had talked to Todd, he's like, wow, that's like a fifty percent increase, so that's what I've asked for is an extra three thousand dollars. The town of Lakeville, the cities of New Bedford and Taunton for the last. Well, twenty years have all chipped in six thousand dollars a year and we've made it work. COVID has kind of put us off our game. And going forward, I can't see it getting any better. Taunton and New Bedford have already agreed. So I was looking for Lakeville to also agree.
Okay. So that would be nine thousand dollars for the twenty twenty three budget, correct?
Twenty twenty three? No.
The next budget, isn't that the next?
No, it would be this year's budget. And I think I think Rich was a little upset because I had kind of waited till the last minute, but I wasn't feeling it. We bill for the year that's already passed is how we've always done it since it started twenty years ago. The town of Lakeville pays out the payroll and then in April first, I send out a letter for services already. Provided for that year, so it's really this fiscal year and for next fiscal year.
Okay, but we do have to earmark the nine thousand dollars in the twenty twenty three budget, right?
Yes.
Okay, in the twenty twenty two budget, we have six thousand earmarked, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. That's correct.
So.
So I'm basically asking for three thousand dollars.
For this year?
Yes.
Twenty twenty two?
Yes.
Okay. So that's exactly where we were at the meeting two weeks ago, so I'll open it up to the board if anyone has questions. They want to ask Nancy.
Madam Chair. The board has. Todd summarized the last two years and actually it's three years now because we're almost three quarters of the way through on two thousand and twenty two. We we definitely agreed and it was included in the fiscal twenty three budget based on July one, okay? So my question here is looking at these revenue projections. First of all. Does. Is there a reason why all the APC members don't pay to support these Rangers?
What do you mean?
Middleborough.
Yeah, Middleborough probably should have way back, but when we did the original agreement. In the original management plan, it was Taunton, New Bedford and Lakeville because Middleborough didn't have any land in. Well, they said they were going to put in the Morgan property into the APC and at the last minute, I don't even know if you remember Pat Rogers, I'm sure you do. It never got in there. So most of the Middleborough side of the land of the APC belongs to Taunton. I mean, New Bedford, I'm sorry. New Bedford owns the land, not actually Middleborough, and then they never put in the Morgan property. Which was supposed to be, but when the deeds went to get recorded, somehow it never did.
Okay, well, we do, we do provide, the APC does provide Ranger service for Middleborough, though. Correct?
Property that's in Middleborough that belongs to New Bedford.
Okay, so, all right, the question that I have here is that. The and looking at the numbers and Todd gave it to us. He said the starting balance of last July was sixteen thousand three ninety six. And is there a reason why? We we don't have the six thousand dollars from Lakeville, New Bedford and Taunton already in that revenue projection?
Are you looking at this year, Rich?
I'm looking at twenty two, yeah.
Yes, so as Nancy said, she invoices the three communities once a year in the spring. So toward the end of the fiscal year, we have not received, none of the communities have received an invoice yet.
Okay.
So the revenue all hits in the last quarter of the year.
Okay.
And that essentially gives us a balance to work through, you know, as she said, much of the upcoming year. But perhaps the billing should, you know, cycle should be more with the fiscal cycle.
I did send out the invoices to actually New Bedford, ask me for one, to Taunton and New Bedford on March first.
Okay.
Coming soon.
And we have received an invoice. It was for nine thousand dollars, so that was a topic of discussion.
Yeah, I think that was in our last packet, yes.
I mean, I would say that, you know, since the town is putting out this money. To pay the the Rangers that should be done on July first every year, not in March or April.
I could speak with the cities about changing that up. It's just how it was set up in the beginning and I've just been following the. Because I think the first year the state gave us the money. So I don't care. I don't know how it actually came about, but if you want to try to change that, we could do that.
Well, the thing is, well, first of all, the the Rangers are not employees of the town of Lakeville.
Right.
Correct, they're not.
You get a ten ninety nine. You get a ten ninety-nine. Right, Todd? Is it a ten ninety-nine? Is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the other thing that's on here is the Betty Neck hay sales. Have they been twenty-five hundred dollars a year? We didn't get any revenue for this year?
No, not yet.
Okay, when is that going to be due?
That will be due July before for the next year will be due before June thirtieth.
Okay. So I'm going to ask about the boat permits in a minute. But if you take the six thousand, the three six thousands, which is eighteen thousand plus the Betty Neck hay sale, which is going to be twenty thousand five hundred. And you had a balance going into fiscal twenty-two of sixteen thousand dollars. And you spent your expenditures through, what are these expenditures through, Todd?
They're through, through February.
Okay, so through February, the expenditures are ten thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. Then, in looking at those numbers with the revenues that we're going to expect to get shortly, whether it's six thousand or nine thousand, there should be plenty of money there to finish out the year.
But the nine thousand is for next year.
No, 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 I'm talking about this year. Not talking about next year.
The invoice was for this fiscal year.
All right, I, how much money do you say we have left?
Well, according to this.
Yes.
You started on July first, you had sixteen thousand three ninety-six.
Okay, yeah.
You're supposed to get revenue from the hay sales of twenty-five hundred, six thousand, six thousand from the Bedford and Taunton each. That's eighteen thousand, right? That gives you twenty-plus thousand. And you had thirteen, thirteen, sixteen thousand on hand. That gives you thirty-six thousand and you spent ten thousand through February.
Don't forget the boat permits, Rich.
I'm going to talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
But, so that gives you plenty of money, you know, through.
I did not, I thought we were out of money. I did not think we had any money left.
Are these, these numbers correct, Todd, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I guess my question is in the wintertime, there's not as much coverage as there will be probably in May and June. So I don't know how much May and June are going to cost, but.
All right, well, I can see why this is a little confusing, but when we get this money, we wouldn't get, all right, so you're saying we have enough to finish till June thirtieth? Okay, so, or more. But this money has to carry us all the way through until we bill in April of twenty twenty-three.
Unless we start billing on July first.
It's no different than what you're doing now because on July one, all three of us have agreed, we're going to pay nine thousand dollars each.
Right, but I wouldn't bill you for that nine thousand dollars until the following.
But you haven't, you haven't billed us, Nancy, for fiscal twenty-two until you just did it.
Right.
What's the difference?
Because that money has to carry us over until June thirtieth of next year because we haven't been billing. If you change the whole billing thing around, we can do that, but I would have to talk to Taunton and Bedford because we don't get money again until like, I usually send the bills out April fifteenth. So we wouldn't bill again and get the money until June of twenty twenty-three, so there wouldn't be.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please.
You're, if you take what you're looking to receive in FY twenty-two, it's nine thousand more than you'd receive otherwise, three thousand for each of the jurisdictions. You're starting FY twenty-two with a balance of sixteen thousand dollars. Therefore, the nine thousand dollars really isn't needed until next year. That's another way to look at it.
So, is that a good?
Mathematically, the nine thousand dollars is not needed this year if you have sixteen thousand dollars in fund balance available at the beginning of the year.
At the beginning of the year, but it's down to, what did you say, ten in February? And this is March.
But that's, that was no revenue. That was no revenue.
Okay.
So, you know, you're, you're going, you're going to receive another twenty-two thousand dollars in revenue, thereabouts. Taking on the boat, taking on the boat permits, right? And if you're going to spend, I, I don't know. You're going to spend, are you going to spend a high? We, we don't know exactly what you're going to spend for FY, in FY twenty-two, but it's not, unless it's going to be more than thirty-four thousand dollars for the year.
Yes.
You don't really have a problem. Actually, more than that, it'd have to be, it would have to be about, you have to be spending about fifty-one thousand dollars to have a problem.
So, how? Okay, now I'm getting more confused about the boat permits because the boat permits are kind of a separate thing because those hours that go into the boat permits balance out for what we get for the boat permits. It's really not part of the Rangers' other duties.
Anybody's revenue to this fund, I suppose, by policy, yeah.
So, so then we pay someone separately to do the boat permits?
Yes, and the money from the hay field should be used on the peach barn. That's not part of, see, we didn't get any money for quite a few years for the hay fields. But now that we're getting it, that money probably should be in a different account. Because that should be used on the peach barn and not on the Rangers.
Todd, is the peach barn?
There is a separate account for the peach barn. And I'm happy to work out these details with Nancy.
Right.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
So Nancy, I know that we're kind of in FY twenty-two right now and not having the discussion, but having the money appropriated for the, you know, for the upcoming year, I think is, is fiscally responsible. So we're having the discussion right now in March for FY twenty-three. We haven't voted on it yet to increase the six thousand to the nine thousand.
Right.
So we're having that discussion now. So when we do get the invoicing in FY twenty-three, we'll have accommodated that nine thousand dollars. So next March, we should plan on having you or the APC as part of the discussion in the budget planning so that we can look forward to FY twenty-four for next year. So it looks like we're playing catch-up right now for FY twenty-two.
Yes.
With the additional, you know, three thousand dollars requested, which we haven't voted yet. But we're having the same, you know, in the same discussion for FY twenty-three. So I think we might be able to, you know, get into a cycle that would be more advantageous for us going forward. So we just have to make sure that you come back for discussion in February next year. And get on our budget.
I will. I'm going to talk more closely with Todd, too, because I'm just not the best budget person either. And like I say, that twenty-five hundred that we got for the peach, peach barn shouldn't be part of the Rangers' pay. It should be in APC for things that we need done at the peach barn. So it probably, really, right? So maybe it's not really ten thousand dollars in there. Or shouldn't be.
Oh, there is.
Because we only need to go as soon, it's already starting. It's already starting with the people on these nice weather days that we have to be out there. So, and it's for, the, the way I had looked at it is that it's, we provide forty hours of coverage. And I'm thinking with the new apartments coming over where Island Terrace used to be, that we're going to have to be doing more at Betty's Neck also. So it's not just the whole, I mean, Betty's Neck is part of the APC. And we, you know, we have a lot of problem with dogs and stuff there and break-ins and whatever, so.
I mean, I also know that, you know, right, I know you've had problems where you've had to involve, you know, the Lakeville Police and everything else. So there's no question that there's more people frequenting, you know, so there is more. And I know that also came in as part of the reason, you know, why the increase was talked about. But maybe, you know, maybe you and Todd can sit down and sort of look at this. And I, I do think I agree with, you know, Lorraine, that we should maybe, you know, have this as part of the regular budget process. And, you know, the money should go on July first instead of after. That sort of is just different from every other, every other we do, so.
Madam Chair, I just suggest one, you have staff, you know, Todd and I are, Todd, Nancy and determine the, determine the solvent, you know, determine some authority of the solvency of the, of the, of the fund for this year and then verify the solvency and we'll go forward for twenty-three.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a good idea, too, because if in fact, you know, the hay money is supposed to go to the peach barn, then that revenue should maybe hitting the, you know, maybe we can do a, I don't know, a spreadsheet with two charts of account or something with both, with everything that's part of the APC. So so I think that's probably a good idea to have Nancy sit down with Ari and Todd and sort of work on it.
All right.
Madam Chair, no, I, I was the one that asked to be brought it up back at the meeting because I wasn't sure what I was voting on at the last meeting. And so this clarifies the numbers. It's not the question of the three thousand dollars. It's a question of the revenue numbers and the actual expenditures. The revenue far exceeds the expenditures that are available fiscal twenty-two. So I don't know why I would be, you know, asking for three thousand dollars. But, you know, as you've said, have Ari and Todd sit down and discuss that. I have one more question on the boat permits. It's my understanding, unless things have changed, that the boat permits for Assawampset Pond are issued by the city of Taunton and not the APC.
Right, they have changed. We did it, they asked, they didn't have staffing last year to do it, so we did it last year. And we're doing it again this year and they give us the fees. But it's not easy because this year we're trying, at the advice of Serped, we were, Bill Apolitano had advised, because last year it took hours and hours to track everybody down. This year, we're setting up two dates for people to come and sign up. So it won't, hopefully, we'll only have to chase down the people that don't come sign up voluntarily.
So, but, but the city of, the city of Taunton's water department is responsible to do that, right?
Well, they were up until last year and they didn't have any staff and they issued.
Question, Nancy.
Okay.
The APC is not responsible for it. The city of Taunton Water Department is responsible for it, correct?
Yes, I would say the bottom line is.
And the reason, the reason why I bring it up is that if the APC is doing it, okay, with their employees.
Yes.
Who's the enforcement agency?
Oh, there is no enforcement agency, forgive me. Environmental police won't help, I mean.
Anyways, that's a whole other discussion and I'm not going to get into it, but I.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, the only thing going back to, you know, the money and whatever. I do know that Nancy had, she would have liked to have had more Ranger coverage. And I think that's the goal is to try to have a little bit more coverage, especially on the weekends. But, you know, again, I, I think we, I would like to see more coverage, too. And that's the reason why New Bedford and Taunton agreed to pay a little bit more money if it means we can get more coverage. But again, I think I'll let Nancy, Ari and Todd work on the numbers here. And keeping in mind that the actual Rangers' fees may, should probably be more because we do need more coverage.
Also, one other thing, Madam Chair, is that if I knew we had that much money, I wouldn't have done it for free all year. Put in a few hours for myself. I didn't even get a tax form. I called up Laurie, where's my tax form? And she said, you didn't get any money.
I know, yeah, and I know, I know that, too. I know Nancy's not paying herself because she thought she was running short. So that's why I think we need to just sit down, have the staff sit down and just figure this whole thing out for us. All right.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, thank you, Todd. So we're going to move on, Helen. I think you're with us, right?
I'm here.
There she is. All right. So I'm going to let you take it away, Helen, but I think you know Lorraine very well. I don't know if you know Rich LaCamera, Select Board Member, Rich LaCamera. This is Helen from Serped. She is the one that is the primary person on all things grants for study and all for Serped. I think you know Ari Sky, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mark Resnick, who is video off right now, he's our new town planner. And like I had told Ari and Mark that when we told Serped and everyone in the group that we had our town planner, everyone was very excited for, for the town of Lakeville. So I will let you take it away with the, with what we have here in front of us. We have the phases and.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to be here tonight. Thank you guys so much for having me here and, and for, you know, saving, saving the time for this discussion. So like Leah said, I'm Helen Zinkavage. I'm the manager of environmental programs at Serpen. We've been working with the APC management team for the past, well, Serpen has for a long time, I have for the past about three years, on a series of grants that have been guiding us toward a watershed management plan for the APC and then the Masquet River watersheds. The, the phase of work that we're in right now is year two of a two-year MVP action grant. That was a regional action grant for putting together that watershed management plan and then a mask it, for the Masquet and APC. That plan's going to be completed at the end of June as per the program requirements. So we'll have a document going forward. And a couple of things have been happening simultaneously. Thanks to especially the efforts of Senator Rodriguez, we've been able to have further funding put in place for improving the situation in the APC and the Masquet River. He was able to secure two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was allocated to Serped for the purposes of improving floodplain management or invasive species, the exact usage. There's some constraints, but it's pretty, pretty wide open in terms of the existing problems that we know are already in play in the region. And what we want to make sure we avoid at this point is yet kind of another planning round as we consider what to do with that money. Serped certainly doesn't want to impose our own priorities. We, we have, you know, studied the area and we, we know some things about it, but we certainly don't feel like, you know, we should be making any kind of unilateral decision, even though that money is being funneled through our, our shop, basically. So what we have put together is what you have in front of you. It's kind of the core action items that have come out of the planning process, not just for the past two years, but for even, you know, going back decades, when we look at old reports. We know that these are the core activities that we really need to get done to make a difference in the system. And not that the management plan will only focus on these, there'll be lots of other kind of important suggestions in that document as well. But these are the ones that like, we know are, are the big deal. And they're the things that we want to be able to start spending this money on as soon as possible, basically. And so our, our kind of conception is that we're going to take the list, this list that you have in front of you. We're trying to get it endorsed by all of the actors in the region so that we can include it in the management plan, you know, as it is. And just say, look, we went through this planning process already. We, we kind of got these, this funds midstream and so we were able to put together a prioritized plan for spending it that's been endorsed by the APC management team, by all four pond side communities, by the water departments and by a couple others, stakeholder groups in the region such as the Herring Commission and the, the Long Pond Association. So that's what I'm here to talk about tonight is to talk about that prioritized list and to try to, you know, get your guys' endorsement as well if you think that we, we're on the right track in terms of our prioritization. We're certainly, certainly happy to discuss it more if you think things need to, to, to be adjusted here. But we basically looked at three phases. We were centered in on, okay, what's high priority and work that is immediately actionable? So that's the first box that you have in front of you and just for the benefit of anyone who might not have it in front of them in the public. And the work that we put in that priority order in that, in that category was to first address sedimentation buildup in the Masquet River. So this is the upper stretch of the Masquet River, essentially. very close to the dam, APC dam, where there's a big bunch of sedimentation, blocking flow, blocking fish passage and the like that, that needs to be, needs to be addressed. We're hoping to do that with a model, modeling a permit that DMF could use whenever they need to go in on a regular basis and clear, and clear the sediment. Of course, this requires coordination with local conservation commissions as well as some state agencies. So we wanna get, we wanna start to get to work on that. Second is removal of weeds from Long Pond and then a Massey River. So this would put it on both ends of the, ends of the system here. It, most likely that means employing an eco-harvester because this is a water supply body. Some, some invasive species removal options like herbicides aren't an option here. So modeling work that was done on the upper Massey with, by the Herring Commission in the last, this last summer, we wanna transfer that eco-harvester model hopefully to other stretches on the Massey and also into Long Pond. So that's our, that's our second priority. The third would be to install automatic pond level loggers, which we're hoping could solve a semi-frequent, not, not all the time, but semi-frequent problem where there's water level measurements taken by the water suppliers. They have to kind of go through a chain of, of person-to-person kind of communication before they get posted on local websites. We're hoping an automatic system might kind of cut out some of the, the work in between and just read the levels, get them on some kind of public database. And that's there. Fourth is a signage plan and installing some additional signage, and this is aimed at curbing inappropriate recreation. Some of the stuff that Nancy has to deal with all the time. So kind of really putting it together, maybe some consistent signage and some other measures that might help curb that recreation. When it's inappropriate. So phase two work in the next box. It's works that, that's also high priority, but it's gonna require some kind of further study or antecedent actions before it should be taken, right? So the first of those priority items is the Wareham Street Dam removal. Through some hydrologic and hydraulic modeling that we're doing, we are finding that removal of the Wareham Street Dam in Middleborough would be a really kind of the most impactful way to get water moving more, more rapidly through the system. Right now it kind of stops there, which allows sedimentation, sediment to fall out. It, it's just, it's, it's creating some issues. So removing that would be pretty effective in getting some things flowing again, which would be good. After that, we're interested in trying to do a pilot program with permeable reactive barriers around Long Pond. So this, they're called PRBs for short. They're basically a a woody kind of mem- membrane system that's installed in the ground and it's a way to, to slow some of the, of the pollutants from things like septic systems that tend to move through groundwater and put nutrients where they're not helpful in the, in Long Pond. And when they're there, they're encouraging invasive species growth, so trying to, you know, stem some of that from happening would be helpful. The next priority is the installation of a boat washing station on the Freetown Boat Ramp. Number eight, after that is replacing the, the Snake River or Culvert, which is the culvert between Long Pond and Asalumps upon. This is kind of lower in the list because specifically we wanna first remove some of the weeds in Long Pond and start to address the existing invasive species issues. Also, after we install some of the permeable reactive barrier technology theoretically, because, you know, with those things in place, we're hoping that it would decrease invasive, invasive species pressure. So that when you open that, that pinch point, there's less concern about invasive species transferring from Long Pond into APC. Number nine is high priority preservation land acquisition, which is kind of always a good idea in sensitive watersheds like this. But we need to have a, a committee get together that looks at what are the specific acquisition targets in more detail before we kind of jump into purchases, right? Ten, amend local bylaws with low impact development principles around the ponds. And then phase three work, finally at the end of the list here, items eleven and twelve, these are things that are, are pretty, very disruptive to the status quo. And then you'd kind of a lot of ongoing study and consideration before we would put them in place. Basically, we wanna kind of pick everything else off and then these are the things we return our attention to. And that's the APC dam upgrade and reconfiguration. Of course, there's always gonna be a dam at that site, but the current dam could be greatly improved and allow for additional flexibility in, in our, in our view. And then also initiating a property buyout program. This is controversial, but it may be where things are heading for a lot of communities, just given the fact that insurance companies are, are tending to, are hesitating to insure properties in, in vulnerable areas that they used to insure. And, and we, we see that kind of leading to an eventual, eventually buyouts being a more relevant topic for a lot of folks out there. So, thank you for allowing me to say that long spiel, but I did just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. And I'm happy to hear, you know, any thoughts you guys have on this list. And yeah, excited to talk.
You muted, Leah.
Sorry. My numbering is a little bit different on my paper, so maybe you can forward what you have. Not now, but tomorrow, because my numbering, so I don't know if what I have is old or what I gave Ari is a little older. It pretty much says the same thing, but the numbering's just a little bit different, so. That's it. Anyone have questions? Mark, you're included in this.
Okay, Madam Chair, thank you.
Does anyone have? Okay, Chair, I may. It's nice to connect with you again. So I know, and when we were working on the MVP plan and discussing the watershed, we talked about that culvert on Route eighteen, because I know, isn't the Snake River culvert, isn't that down in Freetown?
Oh, it is, it is the one on eighteen. I know there's a couple of things that are, are called the same river within the system, but yeah, it's that main one between Long Pond and Asalumps upon.
Asalumps it. So this is the one closest to Town Hall then? Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, because I know that there's another snake something down toward Freetown that we talked about a while back, but, okay, because I, I just didn't wanna lose that on the radar because it had been such a, a prominent discussion on that one piece, so, okay.
Clarification done. Yeah, and it is something, I think it used to be a little bit further up on the list, but then dropped because of the fact that we need, need to address the long pond invasives before we.
Agreed. Okay, Rich, questions?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, but sorry. I guess what I don't, you know, I guess we've been studying this for two years, you know, at this point, somewhere in there. And this report that's coming out in June. My number one priority is to prevent flooding, which happened in two thousand and ten. That's my number one priority. And I understand we're talking about removing weeds and so forth and so on. But if you look at the, the number here of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for everything that you talked about here, they ain't gonna go anywhere fast. It's not a lot of money, you know, at all. And I guess my, my question would be that, you know, in looking at some of these items, you know, as, let's take the culvert, you know, as an example. You know, the infrastructure money, the governor is about to, and the legislature is about to approve nine point two billion dollars, you know, in infrastructure, you know, for roads and, and culverts and, you know, all of that stuff. And I understand the culvert's gonna cost about a million dollars. We need to get a handle on that and understand what it's gonna take and timeframe and so forth and so on, because everybody's going after this money. And, you know, we want a piece of, we want a piece of the action here, number one. Number two is that there's a ton of money to, to also for management and protecting water supplies and, and so forth and so on. And I don't know, you know, the statement of removing the weeds from Long Pond and then the Massey River. What is it gonna cost to remove the weeds from the Massey River near the dam? Does anybody know what that is?
Yeah, so let me just start, so there's almost like the way it's been working. I, I don't wanna say there's a menu with a price next to each item, but I'll let Helen speak more to that, but I did wanna say that we had a meeting with just the core APC people without all the study folks and the engineers who have been doing all this work. And it was attended by Senator Rodericks. And he actually was very pleased with these phases that we've, that we've come up with, that everyone's come up with. And, you know, he pretty much did say to us at that meeting that, you know, he wanted us to have that meeting right then and there because they are going into the budget season. So I do know that Serped is, should be, well, I believe you are working with the Senator on trying to get some money in the budget for these other projects in addition to that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Rich.
I, I guess the only thing that I would say is, is that, you know, talking to the Congressman, as, as you know, when we did that tour of the area and we received an email from him last Thursday, as a matter of fact. And he was talking about all the projects that he got approved, you know, the funding and so forth and between the infrastructure money and the ARPA funding, you know, that's available from the, from the federal government and which is coming through the state, is plenty of money available. And I just, I, I just think that, say it another way, I don't think we're moving fast enough, you know, to get some of these things moving and get some of these things done. And I, I just think that there's tremendous opportunity out there right now to get some of the funding to fix some of this thing. They're big into water supplies and, and all of those things are protecting, you know, the environment. And I just don't see where the plan is, is to do that. So, back to my question is that, you know, DEP, the, the legislature approved a million dollars for DEP about five years ago, you know, for weed mitigation at Long Pond. Why hasn't that money been released? Why can't that money be used? You know, to address, you know, some of the, some of this concern, because two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not gonna go anywhere. It's not going far at all.
So, so, yeah, so a couple of things. I agree about the fact that it is relatively small drop in the bucket, definitely. I do think that at least for, you know, for numbers, kind of one to the first box here, one through four, we're hoping it kind of advance at least the, like the permitting, all the kind of basic first steps that need to go in place before the work happens, right? So we're definitely going to advance that and we hope to advance it very quickly. We already have meetings scheduled to talk to different permitting agencies and folks about how we do that for numbers, kind of one and two. The other thing is that we are very kind of acutely aware that, in our job all the time, we apply for grants and there is usually like a, a, a local match that has to be put into place. So this funding is really also exciting because it's not only just for the, the specific projects and getting it done, but we're hoping that it will be put in place to leverage additional funds. Like, for example, this month into April, we're gonna be applying for a SNAP grant, which is one of these things that needs a match like this, but it will enable us to kind of use this work as, as that match. And then hopefully get additional funding put in place, right? So, so we are, we do, we want, we do wanna be strategic, right? We understand that we, we, this isn't a lot, but it can be used to garner more, basically, you know, is what we're hoping. Yeah, I agree. There's, there is a lot of opportunity right now. We are really trying to hustle as fast as we can to get, to just, it's just, we have to follow the steps that we have to follow and sometimes they're not all under our control, but but yes, we are trying to move as quickly as we can.
Okay, did I, did I, I understood what you said, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is gonna do for the planning and all of that stuff? Or is that actually gonna be work?
So it is, it is work, right? So we're gonna, a, certain things, like, for example, permitting, it doesn't, that's not, that is, that is squarely outside of planning and we are into implementation, right? So it's just the first step to do that. The, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's very likely that a portion of that will go to actual eco-harvesting, like the way we have this list set up here. So, once we have, but again, that is something that requires some permitting. We're gonna have to talk to Natural Heritage, we're gonna have to talk to Army Corps, we're gonna have to talk to certain agencies and we are, we're already kind of putting those conversations in place, you know, based on the calendar. We're gonna, we're getting, we're talking to these folks. And yeah, so then the money will be used to actually rent the harvester and the, the personnel that you need to do that to actually start to clear some of these weeds. So, believe me, we don't even, we don't wanna be doing any more planning. We wanna do implementation work and so every dollar to the max that we can here is gonna go to implementation. Unfortunately, some aspects of implementation are, are still kind of bureaucratic things like permitting. But we're just gonna take the steps one at a time.
Okay, just to follow up to that question about the permitting and so forth having to do with the the Ascot River, it's my understanding that the, the, between the Middleborough and the Lakeville Herring Commission, they've already done all those sightings and permits and got all those permits, so why isn't it just continuing on with what we did?
So, and they did. So we, it's great that we get to use what they, some of the information that they put together, you know, will shorten hopefully this process, but each, each discrete area is gonna require its own.
And, and just so you know, the town of Middleborough and Lakeville paid for that, so. That didn't come from grant money, the town of Lakeville and, and Middleborough jointly paid for, to get that done. So that's why I think there's a little frustration here that, you know, some of these things aren't moving forward, in my opinion, you know, quickly enough. One, one of the other things, I think you, we have a different list than what you were, were talking about and hearing everything. But one of the major problems on Long Pond, you know, is the boat ramp there in Freetown, which belongs to the DCR, which is the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And they own that. Freetown may collect the money, but, you know, nothing can be done about that boat ramp without the state, you know, approving that. So what is the status of that?
Nothing definitive at this point. Yeah, so I I don't wanna make any, any kind of promises on the timeline there, because I haven't been directly involved in those. I know some conversations happened, maybe some of you are present, I'm not sure, but I, I was not, so I don't wanna. But yeah, we did put that on here in number, number seven. So trying to, yeah, we did, so, so we had, we had an initial meeting with this list about the, with the APC management team. And basically, that was one of the suggestions, was to make sure to add that into this list, which we, which we definitely did do, because it is important, but but I can't, I, I, that one, I, I don't have as good of a read on.
Which is causing a lot of problems with the weeds at Long Pond. So if that is not gonna be addressed, then you're going to be removing weeds in Long Pond that are just gonna continue to come back. It's a major, major issue.
We do now have regular participation by Freetown, Freetown's town administrator and then what is it that Chance does? I forgot.
Chance is New Bedford, but, yeah, yeah, Deb Petty from Freetown has been, has been great, yeah.
Yep, she's been coming regularly and, you know, she's aware. And same thing, Rich, she's saying the same thing that, that you are. You know, they had to move money around in their budget to cover, you know, their extra police budget for patrolling the parking lot last summer. You know, they had to make those transfers at their Fall Town meeting. And, you know, she made sure that the, on the day of the field trip, that everyone knew that, so. Yeah. Okay. All right. So, do you have more questions, Rich, or keep going?
No, I'm not gonna ask any more questions. Sorry. There's a lot of questions, but I, you know, I just can't. Like I said, I don't think we have the same sheet in front of us of what we're supposed to be.
So, the, the, pretty much the reason for tonight, though, and having Helen here is, like she said, oh, oh, there it is, okay. Four. Number five, number six, number seven, number eight, yeah, it, it changes, ten.
Well, the number, the number one on her sheet is not the number one on our sheet.
Okay, yeah, one and two are switched, yep, from our first draft to our second draft, yep. Yeah, one and two are switched. Yep, from our first draft to our second draft. Yep.
Okay, so anyway, so um you know, with all this going on, um instead of just getting, you know, most of the parties that are on the APC can't sort of make a decision like, yeah, this is good, you know, so that's why we decided that it needed to come back to the municipalities. So um, this is the scope of work that's been um determined. And I think what Sir Pat is looking for is, you know, just some sort of a nod that, yes, we agree that this is a good plan. How we get there is a different story, but um you know, right now, I think they're looking for just some consensus if this is what all the towns are agreeing is the important work. Is that correct, Helen, Nancy?
Hundred percent in my view, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Can I just, can I ask one question, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, when we're talking about the weeds in the Nemasket River and Rich, you said that we paid for that, but I thought um that a large part of that money came from the thirty five thousand dollars that Representative Oral got for us.
That was uh Madam Chair.
Yep.
That was for the uh engineering plans, but the town of Middle Borough and Lakeville had been setting aside six thousand dollars a year to actually do the harvester. And we paid for that. Right?
Where did the money that that are thirty five thousand dollars from Representative Oral go? I thought that it cost more than what we put in to do it.
That had to do with uh everything to do with the permitting and the plan and all of the stuff from the federal government that they had to do, all the engineering and stuff like that. That's what that money was used for.
Okay. For taking those weeds out of the Nemasket, right? Okay. All right. All right.
And we appreciate that.
Yep. Yep. Um, but it's never enough money, so we all know that. Um, so does either one of my select board members want to make a motion? Or do we to um say we are in agreement with this plan or write a letter? I will entertain ideas.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the Serpide recommendations for future project phasing. Uh, it'll be the one that you have, Helen, the one through twelve um that you had just shown us um to move forward uh for the June twenty twenty two um I guess proposed deadline for submittal.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
May I ask that um Helen send us a uh copy of that document? We don't have it.
Yeah. 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 Um, okay. Do you want a second, Rich? I can step down in a second.
No, I'll I'll second it, but uh, you know, um I I I don't feel comfortable with the plan uh without understanding what's behind this plan. You know, understanding costs and and stuff like that and timeframes and so forth, so uh this is pretty broad. Um, that's okay. But I would like to see more definite information, specific information about each one of these. What is there? How many? It's all the chat. I don't know what it is. So I don't have.
Yeah, yeah.
That's that's my only opinion.
Okay, and I mean, we have, I I would say Helen and Nancy, we have talked about that. Um, but we have to start somewhere with some sort of consensus. Helen, can you tell us? I think you've gone to Middle Borough, right? Was Middle Borough in agreement with this plan?
Yes, yes. So they um they voted in favor of like an endorsement, basically of it. Yep.
Yeah, an endorsement, okay. Um, even with the dam removal on there and everything, but I'm sure they had their their uh concerns about that, but um
Yeah, um, but but uh there there's one issue there that needs to be looked at with regard to where a public well is kind of near the the Wayham Street Dam, but um other other than that, I um it was supported, so.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Camera.
Fabian, I. All right. Um, thank you, Helen, for coming. I know you have been with us all night. I appreciate your time. Um, so Ari, do we want to? Do we need Ari or Tracy? Do we need any kind of a memo to write or? Is this?
It's really the the it's really the board's decision. We haven't been asked to do anything by by Serpide, so I I don't have.
Okay. Uh, I think it's just a consensus, right, Helen, that, you know, we've taken a look at this. We're not committing to, you know, um financing anything or whatever, so yeah.
It's the plan, right? Just the plants of metal.
Yep.
And and I think even if it's just reflected in the minutes, just anything maybe we can point to in the future.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else for Helen or Nancy? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Um, I believe now we are at agenda item number eight, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so attached, we have a memo from Ari regarding the development of the town of Lakeville Statement of Values. When I asked him today, he said that no one had any questions for him. Are there any questions right now?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, no, I don't have any questions. Um my opinion, we've been doing this in the past and I I thank Ari and the uh department heads for actually documenting it. I appreciate that.
That's a really, if I if I say not, I'm sure that's a really good point that Rich makes because that's really what this is about is is defining intangible forms, the values that drive our organization forward and being able to use this as a leadership tool for new employees and for managing staff. Um, this will really be the first step in this process. We'll be looking at the um uh performance evaluation process and um eventually um to marrying up these values with um our strategic planning and and uh and objectives going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Lorraine, any comments?
Did you say? I think you're spot on, Ari, with these. And um I commend uh the work behind it. I know it was I'm sure you had to drive some buy-in at first, bringing everybody together, but it looks like you you you've done the work and I think this is absolutely you know, a a good step for us.
Yeah, I I am um in defense of our of our department heads, um buying wasn't too hard. Um, we had, we had a good facilitator. And um actually, it's really kind of fun watching it all come together. We had different department head, we divided into subgroups and the different department heads, we had teams of two or three departments who worked who worked on the different values that we had all defined as our as the as the lead value. So each one of those write-ups was drafted by and then refined by the group by um two or three department heads. So it's um it's 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 really nice. It's going to be a really great, it's a really great way to 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 bring the organization together, I think.
Okay, um, we don't need to vote, right? Or do you want us to vote?
Not unless you want to. I mean, I I, you know, you know.
I would like to um at least have us vote um to adopt this. Um, I think it would be, it's would state a lot of the work that's been done. So I'll make a motion uh that we adopt the statement of values uh presented to us um this evening and implement the the process that you have uh, well, I'll just adopt the um the statement of values presented to us this evening. Thank you.
Okay.
No second.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
Uh, the camera.
Baby and I. All right.
Thank you.
Um, so who do we still have with us? John, maybe we can uh do that next so that John can and go to, is that all right? Is that okay with everyone? Number ten. There he is. All right, so we have a memo from John um with the draft job descriptions for summer positions at Clear Pond or Park Director, Park Attendant and Lifeguard Swimming Instructor. Anything um you want to add to that, John or Ari?
I would I would just say that um there's very little in the way of change. Um, I spent an afternoon um with Paula just touring all the parks and having her give me a rundown of of what the various people actually do. So I think it's just a little more reflective of what the actual duties are. Um, and that's it. And even that, very, very little has has changed in here.
Okay. Um, I had one question myself, and that was the director is the one that has the, we're requiring the Safe Serve for the director?
Yeah, one person has to have a serve safe uh certification in order to run the concession stand.
Yeah. And we're requiring that of the director, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, does anyone else have any other questions?
Um, with that surf safe, I know that'll be something that they'll have to have at the time that they're interviewing, not something that they're going to get, correct?
Yeah, I mean, unless they can get it before they start, it's 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 not, well, I shouldn't say it's not that hard to get because you do have to take an exam, but
It's an eight hour and it's costly. It's, you know, it's a couple hundred dollars.
Yep. Yep.
So. Um.
But they need to have it before they start because otherwise we can't open the concession stand.
All right, well, that makes me a little uncomfortable if that's not something that they have at the time that we make the job offer um before they would start, because if they don't get it, then they obviously can't assume the position because they didn't meet the requirements that we put forward and that would leave us at a disadvantage. So I'd like to make sure that that is something that they have at the time of offer.
Right, yeah, let me do that.
Um, yeah, my 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 question is, um, and again, I, you know, don't know a lot about serve safe, what you can and can't do, but um are we, we're not cooking in there, right? Or are we?
They were at one time and and when we say cook, we use the term loosely. Um, you know, it was like a little hot dog machine and I think there was like a pizza oven that they were running. Um, and if I, if memory serves, um, what happened was the the person who was in charge did not have a serve safe certification, so they had to switch to prepared foods, which we can still do. Um, you know, if we can't find somebody who has a serve safe, it's just, it's it's preferable to be able to to
Yeah, I I guess, I guess that's what I'm concerned with too, like Lorraine. I just don't want us to be trying to find a director. I just hope there's an alternative there to just go to prepared, whether it's just drinks um or whatever. Um, but, okay. All right, I will, and go ahead.
But one more thing, because if if, now, this is the Board of Health, um, I know, requirement. So if the food handler's manager certification is required to do anything other than packaged food, then anybody that's working at that facility, I believe, will have to go through and get their food handler certification, which I believe is just the ten dollar online or maybe eleven dollar online class. So has that been vetted through the Board of Health requirement for the people that would be working in there if we didn't just do process packaged food?
Uh, that didn't come up. That question didn't come up. So I'm I I can't answer that with certainty, but I can find out.
Okay, because I, if I'm not mistaken, um, that is something that they would require if it's considered um like a kitchen that's outside of, you know, packaged food. So I'll just make sure that we've got that base covered.
Um, okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the job descriptions of Park Director, Park Attendant and Lifeguard slash Swimming Instructor.
Removed.
Any discussion, other discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera.
And Fabian, I. Gee, is that all we needed, John, for? I wish I had known that. I would have taken you way earlier. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I learned a lot this evening. It's fine.
Okay, um, I think that's all we needed, John, for, right? I think so. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so now we will go back to item number nine, which is discuss the request from Twin Coach Estates Homeowners Association for a rent increase. So Ari had sent out this information um to everyone because it's a little it's a little uh, you know, involved. But we have here, um, the homeowners association has approved their own rent increase, but technically on the books, we still have a rent board. So they needed to come to us to get our permission um to do this. Now, this is sort of a two-part question, but um I think we should just uh prove or not the twenty five dollar assessment that they, that the association has already, I think it was almost unanimously approved for themselves. I can't say it was unanimously, but it had, it had a lot of favor. But I will do, I, yep.
Um, that's not what they're asking you to approve. They're coming to you for a capital improvement project. Um, the rent control board has to approve any capital improvement projects. They need to have their roads redone and their sidewalks. The rent increase was proposed to pay for the capital improvement, but they can't move forward on the capital improvement project until the rent control board holds a public hearing and and allows it.
Okay. Protest whether to approve, whether to allow them to proceed with the capital improvement plan.
Ah, okay.
Have to set up a hearing.
Well, I guess I should have been asking the town administrator some questions, huh? Um, okay, so let, I'll entertain a motion for that. Anyone want to give it a try?
Well, before we, before we do that, if I can, Madam Chair, I guess we need to first determine if we as the Board of Selectment or the Select Board will assume the role as the Rent Control Board, because we have no members of that board right now. So if we I guess, vote ourselves to step in as the Rent Control Board, then we can vote to have the hearing, I guess.
Okay.
That makes sense, Ari?
Yeah, the the Select Board has to decide to decide whether to appoint itself as the Rent Control Board.
Okay, which Greg Corbo, who's our town council, has said we can do, right?
Yes.
Yep, that's what's in the attachment, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so um we can do that. And then the question of whether we should continue to have a rent control board is a question that comes at the end. But right now, we can appoint ourselves as the uh as the Rent Control Board. So uh I will entertain that motion.
All right, I'll make the motion that we um appoint the current Lakeville Select Board as the Rent Control Board. A point.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Carboni, I.
The camera.
And Fabian, I. And um
Okay, so to, if you're going to, if you're going to consider this 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 item as a rent control board, I believe there has to be a hearing scheduled. So you would need to vote to um send this to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
And upcoming probably be the May meeting. Right, this is March, March, April, sorry, sorry. Let's say, right, Tracy's second April meeting?
Um.
Or May meeting?
Day to day. Um, they really want to get going as soon as possible. Since we are in a daily newspaper now, we could set it for April eleventh, but um if on page five, section seven, it calls out the whole process, like for the capital improvement and basically, they filed a petition to obtain pre-approval from the board for an increase in maximum rent to offset the cost of a substantial and necessary capital improvement or purchase of capital equipment. Um, then, so when they they they've given us all the stuff, they kind of skipped a step because they were supposed to do this before they got their financing, but their financing because they were supposed to do this before they got their financing, but their financing is already in place. The board was supposed to have approved the financing. So then the board shall consider whether the improvement is necessary and the reasonableness of the cost of improvement in considering a rent increase to support the cost of improvements, the renter's fee shall be conditioned upon satisfactory and final improvement of the, of the improvement. Then, when the improvement is completed, the board will give the approval of the increase in the rent. Final approval shall only be given by the board upon submission of satisfactory evidence by the park owner or management that the capital improvement has been satisfactory completed. So it's a multi, they come to us, you guys give the pre-approval, they go, they get the work done, then they come back with evidence that they completed the work, and then the rent control board would vote to approve the increase.
Okay, so. Um, this is where we need to give them that pre-approval, right?
Correct. They're looking for the pre-approval.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, do the work, and then come back to you with proof that the work has been done. And then the board would vote to approve the rent increase.
Okay. So we still.
Have we done this before? This is the first time we've ever done something like this?
Right, and, and of course, I do think that in some way, you know, their association has already, you know, decided that they want to pay this money, so I far be it for us to say no to people. But, uh, so the next step here is for us to give them the pre-approval on the work, correct?
Yep, that would be the next step.
Yep. So we can do that pre-approval and then once all that other stuff is done, then we can do the hearing for the rent increase, correct?
Yes, once they back with proof that the work has been completed and paid, then we would, you would go ahead and consider the increase in the rent.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, so I might understand that they have to do the work or get the funding for the work first?
They, they've already received the funding. They kind of skipped that step. They already went and got their funding. So they have the funding. So upon completion of capital improvement or purchase of capital equipment for which a park owner or management has received pre-approval, the board may give final approval of the increase in maximum rents. Final approval shall only be given by the board upon submission of satisfactory evidence by the park owner or management that the capital improvement has been satisfactorily completed or the equipment purchased and that the costs incurred for such improvement are equal or exceed the cost upon which pre-approval was given.
What should have happened was that they should have come to, come to the rent control board with the plan. Control board should have approved the plan. And then they should have gone to get the financing and then come back for the financing, which would have included the fee and the increase. And it would have been the hearing and approve the financing. They've skipped all these steps now. So you're kind of facing a situation where the first thing you do is you need to do the pre-approval. And then I would recommend that you just go straight into scheduling the hearing.
They, they do have an estimate for the work of $198,300. That's the estimate that they submitted, but that was as of December of 2021. I don't know if they have a up-to-date estimate. But that's what they gave us.
Okay, well, they probably had a, a time that that would be good for, so. Okay, so at this point, I will entertain a motion that we give them the pre-approval. Anyone want to do that?
So moved. Because this is the Hogan Associates that we've, that we reviewed, right, well, that we have in our packet that I looked through. This was.
The Hogan Associates report was basically like a structural report of all the, the things that are wrong and the things that need to be replaced. There's an estimate from Asphalt Services LLC.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, okay. Sorry, it was a tick. I found that. Okay. Yep.
Okay, so Rich has seconded. I mean, all I want to say is the, I'm just sort of cutting to the chase here because I did go by there. One of the back roads seems like it's in pretty decent condition, but a couple of the other roads, you know, they have cones sitting in the roads because the potholes are so bad. So I, I think this work is definitely warranted and clearly if the residents there are willing to pay this money, I don't think I should be standing in their way for them to do improvements. So does anyone else have any comments? I wish they had kind of gone according to the order of things, but that's okay. We'll, we'll get there. All those in favor of the pre-approval?
Carboni, I?
Uh, La Camera.
And Fabian, I? Okay, I think we have to wait before we schedule a hearing, right? Because in order to do the rent increase, it has to be after they finish their work, right? Isn't that what that said?
Yes, um, they have to complete it. You know, give you evidence that it's been completed, and then the rent control board would vote on the increase of the rent.
Okay, so then we need to wait on the hearing.
Yeah, that's right.
And if that's, if that's the case, we're going to need to do that hearing. So I think right now we need to, we can certainly have a conversation about whether we need to continue having this rent control board. I mean, as it is, we just appointed ourselves because no one's appointed to it. I'm pretty sure Selectman La Camera had said last year or the year before that they have their own association and they're the only housing in town that we need, needed the rent control board for. So it probably should be something that's brought to town meeting, but I think we just wait until they finish their work because I wouldn't want them to get held up by anything we do and getting their work done. I don't know if anyone else agrees with that or if that even made any sense at this point.
I think it's, I think that's a good plan. I think it's one step at a time.
Okay, Rich, you okay with that?
Yep.
Right, I know you've been saying for a year or two now that, you know, let's hopefully get that done. All right, um, agenda item number 11. We have the Mixtape Event, which is an event, a cycling event that takes place, but they do a lot of, they usually use the roads and then they go like sort of off-road. So the only thing that I have a question about this is that I did see that the organizers asked if the fee could be reduced because it is, I guess, a fundraiser for Boston Children's Hospital. I think when we wrote that policy, Ari, didn't we leave ourselves a place where we could waive the fee?
Yes, you do have that ability, ma'am. The, just, it was kind of a late request.
Yeah, so.
Last Thursday and they'd already paid.
Yeah.
So we have to refund, I suppose, but yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up to the board members to talk about that. So does anyone have any comments on this?
So they want to reduce the public way license fee of $500 to $250. Is that? But you were just.
Really give a specific amount, but you, but you do have in the, in the policy the ability to go to $250 for a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
Yep.
Everything else looked. Yeah, the Mixtape Event would happen, happened for a few years, but of course with COVID, it didn't happen in 2020 or 2021, I think. So, but before that, the feedback was always positive. They, they were good, respectful. And like I said, they didn't spend all their time on the primary roads, so. You know, so we need to approve the license, but then as a board, we could approve it with a reduction in the fee.
All right, I just have one quick question on the, the certificate viability insurance. I know the certificate holder, it was the Town of Lakeville, but then there's another one here for Ted Williams Camp. Is that something that, that's the first time I had seen that? That we list Ted Williams Camp and not the Town of Lakeville?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because there's two here. That's why I was a little confused when I was reviewing this.
Let's see, Tracy, do you have any thoughts on this?
I believe that they were just kind of making sure that they had insurance for any one that needed to have insurance. They, because they start at Ted Williams Camp. And it looks like all of the, the liabilities are identical. So basically, they fronted for Town of Lakeville and one for Ted Williams Camp to cover all their bases.
Okay, as long as we have the Town of Lakeville, that's what I was concerned with.
Okay, Rich, any questions?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Um, does anyone, I, I mean, I, I would like to see for the nonprofit, I mean, for it because it's a fundraiser and it's going to Boston Children's Hospital, I would like to lower the the fee. I don't know if anyone else wants to do that. Anyone?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the public way license submitted for the Mixtape Event and reduce the fee of $500 to $250. A period.
I'll second that motion, but clarification here, the company that's doing this event is not a nonprofit, just so you know.
No, it's not a nonprofit.
They're not a nonprofit. So if, if we're going to do this, I would like to know from them what their actual expenses are. You know, that, and, and the charity, and I have no problem giving the money to, to the hospital. I think that's great. But if you look at some of the other events like Pan Am and stuff like that, you know, 100% of their money, you know, goes to cancer research or whatever it happens to be. So I, I, you know.
Yeah.
We need, we need to have another discussion someday about some of these events that are happening. Because, you know, as an example, I mean, I, I called a guy myself. And there's 300 participants. That means that the Ted Williams Town parking lots that weekend are going to be full. That day. That's a problem.
Well, shame on me because I thought it was maybe like 30 people or something, so.
Yeah, actually, before he even got the license, the people were already signed up, so shame on him.
Okay, well, then I.
I don't have any problem with it.
If this is a work, right, if, if I thought this was a small group of people just doing this to raise money, so shame on me. So I, in that case, I would not be in favor of reducing the fee. So, Lorraine, I don't know if that changes what you want to do.
I can rescind my, my motion and submit another one that we just. All right, so I'll rescind my motion. My previous motion and this motion will be to approve the public way license submitted for the Mixtape Event scheduled for April 10th, 2022.
Second.
All right, any other conversation? I appreciate the heads up on that. Selectman La Camera, all those in favor?
Carboni, I?
La Camera, I.
And Fabian, I? All right, uh, agenda item number 12. So Sun Multi Sports has offered that donation of $1,500 like they do all the time. So we just need to know where we want to appropriate it. What's on, not on here is, I do know that Betty's Neck is having a celebration or Nancy's trying to have a celebration this year because it's 20 years. I think that we've had Betty's Neck, so that could be one option of where to give some of the funds, but otherwise I'm open to suggestions. Anyone have any suggestions where we should put the money? We can divide it. We can, whatever we think we should do.
Ari, do you have any, anything on the radar that people might have approached you on for charitable donations?
Um, the only other major item I have, and I, I don't think we have a need from this, would be the cover for the stage by the, by the, by the library, by the old library.
Oh, right.
But we, but I think, I think the Historical Society, also the Arts, sorry, the Arts Council has, has funding to be able to move that one forward. So, you know, I, Betty's Neck is as good a place as any. There's certainly the Peach Barn's got plenty of needs. I mean, this isn't going to make, this isn't going to make the difference. All those are, but it could, you know, help a little bit, so.
Sure. I'm happy with that. I, I think for 20 years, we should be having a celebration.
Yeah, so I know they're going to have a celebration. So, you know, we could give them, I don't know if we want to give them 500 and then earmark the rest for the Peach Barn. I mean, I, you know, it's up to whatever anybody wants to do. I would like to see some money though, go to the Peach too. I'm sorry, to the celebration. I think that would be a really nice, nice day for the, I hope that would be a nice. I think it's a good thing to do.
Well, make a motion, Leah.
Well, I just don't know if we want to spend it all there.
Make the motion and we'll discuss.
The, Tracy, the Farm Community Collaborative, did we get any feedback from that last year?
No, we didn't get any feedback. I don't know if, I believe that was Selectman Days.
Yeah, I think.
He received anything, but we didn't in the office.
Okay. Um, all right, I'll make a motion, step down a chair and make a motion that we earmark the $1,500 donation, 500 to Betty's Neck celebration, 500 to Friends of the Library and 500 to Friends of the COA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Anyone not happy with that? We can change it. All right, all those in favor?
Carboni, I?
Camera.
Fabian, I? We have next agenda item number 13, a resignation letter from Adam Young from Open Space. So I will entertain a motion that we accept his resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, can we just send a letter just saying thank you for his time on service?
Yep, and we usually, well, we always send a letter of thanks and we advertise for the position, right, Tracy?
Yes, the, um, the vacancy, I already have it advertised. We have two vacancies currently on that committee. One of the members has moved out of state and did not submit her a letter of resignation. I'm trying to get one from her. So they, there are two and there's going to be an upcoming one in the fall.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor of accepting the resignation?
Carboni, I?
Camera.
And Fabian, I? Okay. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March 7th, and I'm pretty sure all of us were here.
So moved.
Any discussion? Favor?
Nope, all good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Carboni, I?
Camera.
And Fabian, I? All right, I have nothing under new business. Anybody? New business? Anything?
Hmm, no.
Okay, old business? Anything under? Anything under old business, anybody? Okay, any other business that can properly come before the select board meeting? Uh. The, uh, April eleventh meeting will probably be a reorganization meeting. So I've enjoyed my year as chair, um, and that's all I'm gonna say on that. It's a lot of work, um, anything else from anybody? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni?
Uh, look at my.
And Fabian I, thank you, all right.
Good night.